For those presentations.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and get started with presentation of Ostrup for outdoor lighting displays. And one of the things that we thought that maybe we could do, because he wants to be able to show it up on the board there, so in order to be able for us to see it, maybe what we could do as council, maybe we can go sit down there for this presentation, if that's okay with you guys. So let's go ahead and sit down here.
Thank you, Mayor. We're working on updating our technology, but we're not quite there yet.
Hey, how are you?
Presenting.
Good.
I'll have to go after that.
I'm insecure by the man.
The man. Look, thank you, Mayor, for, well, first inviting me back to present, but to get you guys down here for everybody to see what's on this board, hopefully. I'm Brett Ferris, and the company, as I mentioned, is Ostrup. What I do, I'm gonna give you a sense for here in a second. I do these art festivals around the country, and Dana and Duke Crawford had wondered if this might be something to bring to Trinidad. So I've been a guest, checking out the town, seeing what's going on. The good thing about this idea, at least, is it's very flexible. It doesn't require forklifts, might require a few people, but it's not like other, if you've heard or seen these kinds of life festivals where they require forklifts, they require teams of people just to operate one artwork up on a building, and they do get kind of spendy. So this stuff that I'm gonna show you, and you might miss it there, but this is Trinidad itself. So I was able to get underneath the underpass, as well as a couple other places, project test, and see what it's like to have out there. So the idea here, you know, I've been doing this since 2008, and I think my job is, more than anything, just remind people of the built, the unbuilt environment, as well as place and community. And these are very flexible, very adjustable, and again, they're experimental. This is different than what you'll see in a second, because I want to give you a chance this time to see what projection mapping, if you've heard this term before, what that's like. It's kind of prevalent around the country, around the world, but it's just not what Ostrup does. So I guess, a couple other ideas through, just under square here, is that you're outside the institution, you're not in a museum. People feel a lot more free to talk about their opinions, but they also get a chance to, especially with research has gone into the idea of awe or wonder, is they get to let go of these things that predispose us to having opinions, about all kinds of different things. You just let go and become part of the community itself. And it's now from those moments where you do start experiencing these ideas of joy, but you just start experiencing things you had passed every day, and all of a sudden you see differently. It happens all the time. It doesn't have to be big, gargantuan, pyramid-like stuff. So without this further preface, this is projection mapping. First of all, designers normally take over a large wall. In this case, they painted it to look a certain way. Again, I mentioned forklifts with cherry pickers, all kinds of different equipment get involved. As you can guess, doing a mural to begin with is kind of, you know, outside a normal budget, unless you've got a cap. But this is quite large, this is in L.A. This starts giving you a sense for all this sort of digital manipulations, to make sure that that artwork that's as a mural is registered to the thing that gets projected now. So it requires all these grids, and I mentioned a team, there are like five people involved with this one project, just to do one work. And in a way, it's one voice. There's not a lot of flexibility. Once this is up there on the wall, that's it. You start seeing the crowds, you know, that start appearing, so it's like a performance. People have to wait for this to go up, up on the wall. And you'll see here in a second, the work that I do, each artwork takes one projector, one media player. In this case, this work takes four projectors. Because it's in L.A., it requires a very bright set of projectors to compete with the ambient light of a city. So there you go. There is the four projectors in this one case. It's just kind of unwieldy to get a lot more of the budgets required to do it. So I want to be able to position what Ostrup does in a much more manageable way, it can scale each year, to start filling in areas that you want to start seeing more of. So there's no wait, people move about as they wish. Multiple houses, not just one artwork upon the wall, all kinds of art. And this projection map experience, again, you're locked in. Whereas being able to walk around and see all these different works in the community that you know, just makes it that much more open and allows you to just start thinking your own kind of ideas, instead of being dictated to. So what I want to do, and then, you know, I know we've got like probably 20 more minutes to get through this, but I do want to note the clients that have been involved with them, how they differ from where, you know, talking to you guys as a town, and how this kind of interplay, anyway, does kind of lead me into a new place with you. This is a real estate developer in northwest Florida. This is the development. The goals here was to get the word out about this town. They also needed to bring people in as a community to help them hire or have their own set of employees. They had a lot of larger kinds of goals than I would expect with you. Although I guess employment wouldn't be a bad idea to bring in. So in this case, with real estate, you can start seeing how they need to sell these structures. But what happens in this festival is there is a beginning, middle, and end here. It starts here at the top and winds itself through the development, and then ends here at this pool. So in this case, there are around 40, well, artists is 27, it's around 40 projectors. It does take a bit of work, production teams involved, and I'm not recommending this for Trinidad right now. I don't know it's necessary. To me, I really appreciate smaller footprints. That kind of intimacy blends itself to the community, lets you get inside of it a lot more quickly. So this is the beginning of one year, 2017. You can see the entrance, this is ticketed, so this is a much different situation. With real estate, the tickets were $250 per person. Not recommending this, I want open, public art. This one was fenced, or every year it is fenced, you just can't even run in, they got their own security. It's much different. This is the endpoint here at the pool, just lots of different areas to project. Gives you a sense of something larger, but also it's manageable. It's not something that's on the side of a big, huge building, and you're wondering what you're gonna see next. This is the footprint I want to recommend for Trinidad. This is a museum that sits inside of a park. And I've taken an overhead view and then marked out the different locations of each projector. This is part of the workflow that I hope to be able to talk to you in a second. But their goals were pretty straightforward, they needed to open up their audience. There are snowbirds down in Florida, and they needed to let younger families, teens, kids know that this stuff is going on. So they were trying to get themselves in a different place and let people know that this even, you know, this museum exists. So this is, we're going into the third year, it's got 10 projectors out there, and then in this case, 18 artworks. And they dig what's going on. The first year, they had 1,200 people show up for two nights, and it doubled itself this last season in 2022, as we go into December this year. So just a little bit here, just to give you a sense of, I mean, there are people just wandering around. This work doesn't take over conversations, it goes back and forth, so that, you know, that's the thing about that projection mapping, it just takes over the conversation. It doesn't want you to think about anything else but this here, again, people just wander around, checking out things, and they might take in the work, and then they'll drop down and start talking to the person next to them. So this is just a quick note of being in Denver. Again, I'm not really, I'm not good with big cities. There's just too much ambient light, and it costs too much to get the kind of projection you need to overcome it. I bring it up too, though, born and raised in Denver, I'm trying to make my way back from the east. It'd be great to be able to be here. I've got a couple other locations that, been doing one in Vail just last April, had to work with three to four feet of snow. But it was another potential option for Trinidad, seven projectors, 10 artworks. All but two of these works were open to the public, so they're outside the venue. And that kind of mix is sort of interesting. You don't have to worry about tickets, but if you need a VIP area to help budget or fund, the festival can make it happen. So this venue, it was two nights, we thought they were gonna sell about 1,500 tickets, and ended up selling 5,000.
Wow.
And they were $90 apiece, which, again, nobody knew or saw that coming. So there are a lot of possibilities with these kinds of festivals. This is the last example I'll show you here, Buena Vista, December 31st, so New Year's Eve. This one has a smaller footprint, five projectors, 10 artists, and I don't have, like, you've been seeing some of the videos here in it. I just wanted to make sure you got to see how you can project on businesses, can project on different theater, you know, edifices, this kind of thing, in addition to what other foliage you got out there. But it works in a lot of different locations. This is a workflow, I just bring it up real quickly, it's part of what I have to do in order to make sure that we're meeting goals that you guys would have to be able to take on a festival like this. One of the things, it's gonna be path formation, trying to understand the activation, and the kind of flow that you would have from it, the obstructions or safety considerations go into it. There would be an art selection that would lead us into design, define requirements, includes the kinds of projectors we would use and to make sure that they're bright enough and not just, you know, expensive and out of hand. Because that is a problem, and I want to be able to address these things with you, that keeping these budgets small, and it's the thing that's helped even a museum in the middle of a park or Buena Vista consider these kinds of festivals. So I mentioned here that there are enclosures if you want to go permanent at some point, but then you just keep testing and iterating this whole process to make sure you get it down. It's all experimental, very flexible. So Trinidad, one of the things that I guess we need to continue talking about is sort of a calendar. I'd like to be able to bring this in November or December, it's possible, very possible. Normally, I've been hearing at least that Trinidad experiences festivals happening, you know, what we'll plan for next year, 2024. This thing being as flexible as it is can bring these kinds of projectors and make this thing happen very quickly. Guess that's the other thing about doing something with 10 projectors, just gotta get that path knocked out. And I did an overhead real quick, I've got some ideas on how to run it through the town, but it also hinges on what you'd like to see, of course, like, is it gonna be the parade of lights, is it? Or if it happens around the first Friday, there's a, you know, a number of different considerations, what might be good, might not be as good. So the hope here in showing a kind of draft timeline, we're gonna need to do something here soon unless, you know, we need to just talk about it for next year, but these prices that I've quoted here, they are slightly below market, I'd like to be able to bring this to you guys. This is, as it states, 10 projectors, 18 artworks, it's gonna come to around 32,000. If you want to go smaller, seven projectors, around 28,000. This gets into something larger, and this would be something to talk about the following year. But just to get something for people to be able to experience soon, it can happen. We can talk about what that includes, but how we work with security or scaffolding, these other kinds of logistics. But I guess the the thing that, in doing this discussion, that maybe, I mean, it becomes an issue. How do you justify this cost? One of the things that I've been hearing is there's a, there's a need to bring more people off the highway, for instance, instead of it just always being a drive-by. Is it possible to capture 5% of the number going across in front of us? With this shareability, people feel safe inside of the space like this kind of festival, they start sharing with pretty much everybody. It's the reason that Alice Beach, that first case I showed you, where in 2008, they were selling no real estate, and then in April 2021, that month alone, they sold just sort of 250 million. It's because people are sharing what's going on, and they bring the people in. Makes everybody's job that much easier to find where we want to go with these goals. And the same is true with Barrow Beach Museum, they had a great success, and it's simply because of the way that people feel about this kind of event. And they just want people to know about it, they want to share it, want to bring people in it. So we can talk more about these kinds of things with this workflow, hopefully we get to.
Now, I can ask you- Talk a little bit about, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
How would we work with local artists here? Is there, is there an option for that and possibilities to have design done locally that we tie into?
Yes. So I've been talking to Margie as well as Ken Chafan, Margie was here, right? So there, it's very doable to talk to professional artists as well as high school, bring in workshops, and not only have them, let's potentially help with the event, but also bring their artwork as well. So it is a global catalog that I have, but it gets at the same sort of ideas around soul. These, these works that you'll see, capture a lot of what artists are just trying to get through in digital format to begin with, but also how do you get it out for people to see? So it's very straightforward to attack that, especially with, you know, TSC and everything else.
Now, are you, is this like just a weekend thing, or would it go on for a couple weeks, or what?
Good question. So normally, these are weekends, but the way that I've been talking with, let's say Dana, East School, you know, with Rhonda, with college, I mean, they can go as often as, you know, we'd like to see. It's something that, once you have the projectors locally, it's very straightforward to bring them up.
Let's take a look at, you know, here, you mentioned that $31,000 tag. Now, is that just a, how many different pictures, I guess, would you, or would be multiple pictures?
Yeah. So depending on the location of the projector, you would have, like, if people are hanging out, sitting down, bringing their lawn chairs, that projector would probably have multiple works. And then for, for works that you just sort of walk by, they might have one. That's making, yeah. It's something new for me over the last year with this Barrow Beach Museum of Art. People did bring their lawn chairs, had never experienced this before, where they just wanted, they were asking, where's, you know, where's the work? All these works loop, so I had to bring in a playlist, otherwise they're gonna be kind of bored. They're just, they treated it like a film festival, and they didn't see that.
One of the things that we have struggled with is trying to figure out what to do for like a winter festival, I know they're working on something right now, but it would be nice, like, I, I look at it, maybe sometime in late January or something like that, to have like a week-long winter fest-type thing to this, you know, and project downtown with all the trees and all that time. That's just a thought that I had. Or, you know, you could advertise this, so people could come to the community.
Definitely.
And then advertise it.
Well, and so these things, like the projectors themselves, they're rented by the week. So as you say, you can use them every night, it's up to you. And I like the idea, especially in January, because it's one of the darkest months. You don't have to compete with all these crazy lights like you do in larger cities. So it's much straight, much more straightforward, but also because the larger projectors need multiple people to handle them. These are smaller projectors, and it just takes one person to bring them out.
I'd like to see, you know, kind of a tagline for this, you know, coming to the Trinidad Light Show, or, you know, something to that effect, to make people really wonder what's going on in Trinidad, and the word will spread, of course. But if something like that, I think would be nice.
Well, I used it, but one title did, could be worked on, but I mean, it's like Trinidad, Trinidad Lights. Could work in, it doesn't have to be any sort, anything grandiose. That was one of the things that, I was talking to Dana originally in April. I'm not here to change the grit that is Trinidad, I just want to be able to have people see the community in a different light, as it were, and then get into it, yeah. So a week long would be great, especially letting people know you've got some time to see it.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if we're doing like, it's audiovisual, so do we have to pay royalties for the audio? And do we have to pay royalties or something to the artists that are submitting?
Right. So the artwork licensing is a part of the cost.
Oh, okay, I see that.
And they, most of the artists will have their own compositions, so it's part of that licensing.
Audio, audio as well as video?
Yep. No, I can't, I don't, yeah. I've been doing that for, like you said, 15 plus, I don't want anybody, yeah, hanging on the outside.
So you're saying, so if we decided to do a week, that price is just for one week a year?
Yes, it is. And, I mean, the artwork licensing would be for a month.
Okay.
But the projectors themselves, that's just the way that they've done that forever, it's on a weekly basis.
Okay.
And the pricing is, I mean, you know, so you guys can go out and price this stuff, like with Denver, my prices are coming from Orlando and Las Vegas. They're still below those prices for large rental organizations.
So say we wanted to do two shows a year, one in the summer, one in the winter, would you, that be a per-week charge? Is there any cut in the second, second week?
Well, so, as you say, that first year requires some discoveries and just determining the path. So at that second show, yes, if we use the same path, that reduces costs. The use of the projectors, and this is something that's come up, if it's local, we can get the prices down, a little further is. But that second show, like you say, the artwork still remains the same unless we reuse it. Same, yeah.
I look at it as, I think a fall show and a winter show, because, you know, fall is usually, there's a lot of change in
Color.
Color and stuff, but.
Well, Brett and I also talked about maybe some more permanent installations as well. So when you have space to create, the plaza area, those two white walls, we talked about murals there, but how cool would it be to have projectors that can be changed up, that we can commission local artists to do things? If we had a conference there, we could display their corporate logo as part of the art, those types of things. So I think we can think on a permanent level, too, for certain applications, and not just confine ourselves to a week calendar here.
What do the projectors cost, rather than renting?
Right. So they can be, and again, if you get out there and test them, they're gonna be around, maybe averaging 3,000 to 5,000 per. If, as you say, you can kind of blend it, so some rental, some purchase, and just keep wrapping that up over the years, yeah. And the great thing about these projectors are laser-based, so they don't have bulbs that go out. They last for 20,000 hours, which can be 10 years. I don't think you'll use them enough, so yeah, you can, they're, they're great to have around for sure.
One thing that I think is really unique about Trinidad is that we have an expressway that flies over us, and I can imagine that people would be like, what the heck is that? And, and that would be a wonderful draw. I also wonder, too, about what we should probably put in C dot.
Yeah. Well, so that happened with the museum in the park, I had to talk to Florida DOT, and they have, like you say, there is a certain distance that you have to be outside of. But that's all gets taken care of with the safety considerations, yes, definitely. I mean, it's a great way to get in the newspaper.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
Obviously, we need to be mindful of spending that money and expecting, you know, a return for that, and I mean, I know that's why we're discussing it. Is there an easy way, a reliable way to forecast, you know, how many visits a town that's gonna generate? And I get, that's a hard thing to forecast, because tell us where we're gonna advertise it, and you can make a stab at it. That's my first question, because you want to ensure your, I would see this as a great way to stimulate people coming through town for small businesses. If we can get people in meaningful numbers to Trinidad for small businesses, then it'd be fantastic. So that's my first question, how do we have that proof of concept before spending the money? My second question is, I think it'd be very important that somebody ensure that the message that we're curating is synonymous with what we want to project Trinidad as being. Because, you know, we, we, we could, if, we really would want the show to match our messaging that we have for Trinidad. So again, we have that coming up, our, what's coming up, Steve?
Yeah.
We're doing the, I lost it.
Oh, the strategic plan.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, yeah. I apologize, it's been a long day. I mean, you know what I'm saying, we really want to make sure that the message is not contrary to something that we're trying to get out there.
Right.
Otherwise, it's gonna be viewed as a really bright, flashy, and I don't, I don't mean this, but we don't want it to appear as a bright, flashy waste of money.
No, agreed. And there is a kind of confectionery way of seeing this all, I mean, it does seem sugary at first. But I guess that's one of the reasons why I've got this idea, or using this idea of awe and wonder, is that there are ways to start thinking about ROI. It hasn't been fully applied to public art, so everybody in public art is trying to figure out how to do this, still. And that's one of the reasons, I guess, on that one slide here, this just came out in November, placemaking interventions, there are surveys happening, trying to make sense of it. I guess one of the ways that I was talking to Steve about, is there is this event called Blink in Cincinnati. And in 2022, they generated $126 million. And if you look at a 300,000 population, it comes out to around 700,000. And if you look at a three hundred thousand population, it comes out to around seventy-seven dollars per person. If you look at, these are numbers that I was just playing with, that, uh, if you wanted to translate that ratio to Trinidad, it might end up being a two million dollar for the weekend sort of draw, revenue. That's for the inhabitants. Now, Cincinnati has a different kind of way of thinking about itself. It has all these pro teams, for instance, so they have a lot of people coming over state lines. Uh, they're considered a flyover state, not, not anymore. But, uh, what's interesting, I guess, is that we can start, this, I'm doing this with Barrow Beach. We can start talking about who's coming based on their cell usage. There are companies with AI that can tell you. So, there might be some different ways to couch the idea, but I guess that's why you do bring in sponsors. You do bring in other ways to kind of alleviate those pressures that you're thinking about. That's for the ROI piece. It's, it's to be determined, uh, but there are a lot of examples of how it, it works to those goals that organizations set up.
You know, Aaron, I, you know, I look at, the way I look at it is that we're not going to recruit probably all the dollars that's invested, but if we can recruit, you know, sixty percent of it, you know, that, you know, one way of looking at it. And that would be through hotels and dining and that type of thing.
Well, and it is investment in community, which is the other side of things. It has a really interesting.
I'm not against it.
No, 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 I wasn't suggesting that. But it is, it is different to think about this kind of show that way. Um, I guess the second question, uh, that you had.
The curачin.
Is part of that workflow, that I'm gonna be sitting there, I'll bring in a list of work for you to see. I've got it, you know, I've got a spreadsheet up here if you're interested, but, um, it's, it gets discussed. I'm used to working with cross-ages, uh, cross-locations, so it's, it's not going to, uh, impinge or, you know, sort of throw your brand off rails, cause everybody's gonna be seeing it and talking about it. I don't know about this, I don't, you know, all I love to have, but, you know, we'll go down the list. So, nothing will get out there without your buy-in. I'm not gonna tell you this is what you have to show, though.
Yeah, you have eighteen, did you say eighteen, what was the amount of?
Right, I was recommending eighteen artworks, but it'll start.
Can you put it in the same area, or can you put it in two different areas?
There'll be, in that case, uh.
I'm just gonna use as an example, what if we wanna do the building, uh, the Grady Mart's building, inside and on the front? And maybe City Hall, or underneath the bike deck or something like that.
You got it. Well, with ten locations. Yes, sir. With ten locations, or ten projectors, it's ten locations, and then you can put a different mix on each projector. Then they, um, yeah, I agree with the, with the ROI, it's a, it is a kind of, uh, give and take to try and understand where community comes in, but also how, if it's businesses looking to pull away some of the traffic, how are we gonna do that and how do you measure it? I'm, I'm looking at it actively.
Well, yeah, the point is, is that, you know, we're trying to, uh, build, uh, the community and creative industry, uh, conception. And I think that, uh, that's really important, uh, because then it gets the word out that Trinidad is doing something different. So, it builds that capacity in a different way.
Well, in the last year at the Barrow Beach, uh, exhibition, I had a couple teens come up and say they were just so proud of the community thinking of them, like they took it as something that was meant for them. They hadn't seen this kind of work before and normally for a museum, you go inside. They didn't have to do any of that. So, it, it does bring groups into an area that just nor, normally go. And it is a creative class on one hand, it's good to get that discussion happening, but it is amazing how high school kids will talk, start talking.
I, I have one other quick question. I saw in some of those pictures, um, people's shadows coming through them, so presumably the projections arriving on that person. Is it an eye-safe laser?
These lasers go through chambers in the housing itself, so it's not a direct laser, like, you know, pointer, no. I don't think you should want to stare at it, but, um, no, it's not gonna cause you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Um, and your pets, yeah. But they do, you know, sometimes they do emanate out the ground, so I want people in, in the frame.
Yeah, that's what I mean, people's shadows dictating they're in.
It's really important. Um, this is how, that's why you've got a kid seven doing this and you've got a guy seventy-five doing the same thing on the other coast. They, it's like a common language of ours to say, I'm here. So, I like that, the projection mappers, they don't want you involved. They want you to stay on the ground, stay out of frame.
And will they hold this into consideration?
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Do you have, uh, any data or statistics, percentages, uh, showing traditional marketing strategies as opposed to the digital, uh, LED lighting in terms of increased revenue, just for certain festivals in smaller communities?
I don't, nobody shares this, uh, but I, you'd think that they would be, yeah, why, why not? I think it's because, um, at least ads over the last ten years have been seen more as a vanity possibly, because social is supposed to be so much better. But, but the print ads are doing things that aren't happening in social, so it should be out there. I just haven't seen it readily. Seeing on Blink is they've been very, uh, forthcoming with their data, so I could probably ask them to see what they've, I just haven't had that question before. So.
Well, just for, now, we got her back to get on to our next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, uh, kind of accept moving to the segment there, we're gonna go to the second quarter proposed marijuana allocation. There's a particular reason for that, is the chief of police is, uh, our chief. Enough, please, the party chief is doing the presentation, not presentation, he's asking for some planning, we had our questions for him. So, we're just gonna get started with the, uh, second quarter twenty twenty-three proposed marijuana allocations. Who's Neverett, what do you have for us today?
Good afternoon, council. Uh, you should, in your packets, have received second quarter marijuana requests. You can see that the second quarter yielded four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in marijuana sales tax. And of that amount, two hundred and six thousand is available for city projects. Uh, twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-six is due, are available for the Senate. Nonprofits will, will receive thirty-one hundred dollars and the rainy day fund nine five thousand. In your packets, you would have received each request from staff for the city projects. The only one that we didn't have was the strategic plan from city manager, but I believe he's talked to you about that already. And, uh, staff is here if you have any questions regarding the requests.
Uh, the one, like, skip around, we'll be here to just help the party chief out here a little bit. He has a couple of items in here. Item B and C, one was the, uh, forcible entry door, and also the records, the management system. And the entry door was five thousand and the, uh, records management system was ten thousand two fifty. So, give us information with your requests.
So, thank you for entertaining, that I need to be in, so. Um, the forcible entry door, we kind of wanna work with the police department. Um, us getting through a door is kind of our bread and butter, that's how we put out fires and save lives. And so, we'll have, uh, Tophar build us one, because this five thousand dollar price ticket is a little high. I think we can come in a little lower with Tophar building it. Um, but now the police department's doing some training with us on how we get indoors. Um, and so I need to design this door so we can use their tools plus our tools. So it's gotta be beefed up a little better than, than, than a normal forcible entry door that you would buy. Um, but that would just be a training prop that we could put classes on and, um, perfect our entry into houses and stuff like that. And then, the records management system, um, I had talked to the city manager earlier in the year. Our past record management system, that we do all of our incident reporting, that we have to report to the state, to the feds with, um, all of our medical calls, all of our hydrants, all of our inspections, is all kept into our own record management system. And that previous si- system got bought out by another company and was gonna raise our price double and have half the modules that we need in it. Um, and so the city manager and I have talked about moving to this first due record management system. And I thought we had, we're gonna do it through marijuana, and I thought that was already done, but then I was looking at my budget and it, it hit one of my line items that covers our pump testing, our ho, our SCBA testing, our breathing apparatus testing, and our ladder testing. So, I figured I'd come ask you guys if you could help me out with funding on that, so I don't go over on that budgeted line item. And then next year, of course, that will be budgeted for. And then, the third one is the vehicle, and I, and I noticed it went down in price a little bit. Not much, but it went down about three thousand dollars for that pickup that I think I've talked to you guys about already.
Any questions, uh, chief?
I was gonna ask you, Dave.
Better.
You know, the forcible, the props for the doors, are you just gonna have multiple doors because you have sliding and revolving and overhead?
No, um, so, there's different ways to get in overhead and there's different ways to get in revolving. This prop will just be inward and outward swinging. And those are actually our toughest doors to get into, because they can be fortified. On a, on a rotating door or, or an overhead door, you can't really fortify them, we can get in them in about thirty seconds. So it, it's mainly the entrance door, whether inward swinging on residential or outward swinging on commercial, is, is where we need the training, cause they fortify them.
So now you use power tools, can you do?
We have tools for that, yes, sir. But, our, our thing is iron, so we use an axe and a halogen. Um, PD, they use this big old battering ram that I just got to see and demo. And the door that we're borrowing, that battering ram actually damaged that door. So, when we build this new door, we have a plan on, uh, beefing it up so those guys can damage it.
Good old sixty's.
It's kinda interesting.
Good old sixty's.
It costs a lot more damage than we do, I don't know what their deal is, but.
Can I have any questions?
We're talking about the Silverado as well too, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But just a question on, uh, procedures. Um, do you, do you send it out for bid to local dealers, just right?
I, Donna handles all of that, and I think we just use state pricing and that gets sent out, if I'm right.
Definitely, you're correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's state pricing, then it goes up to?
Multiple dealers in the state and then whoever comes up with the best price and has the vehicle or something, right? Does that make sense?
They just, I'm sorry, the state, um, every year the state awards certain, um, dealerships. They submit, I think, and then they award them the contract. And so there's different dealers and some do just cars, some do pickups, some do whatever. So, that's what this is, and this, whoever we're going through, and I, I don't remember right offhand, um, won, won the state award focus type.
Okay, I, I'm gonna have to, uh, know on this, because you're paying fifty-three thousand dollars for like a fifty Chevy.
It's actually a house.
That was me, just, it was some humor too, that probably.
Did you, did you see this, chief?
I, I did, I want that in the group of sale.
And you know what, the nice thing about this is?
That it lasts a hundred years.
Even groceries.
Right.
No, I'm just kidding. I have no other questions.
Right, no. No questions. Then, uh.
I thank you.
That door thing is, how, how long do you anticipate that'll last you?
Um, probably ten years. Yeah, that's, that's kind of, I had one built for Honeys when I was in Honeys, and it's the one we're borrowing, and it was ten years ago. So, it, it'll hold up if you build it right.
All right, great. All right, let's go ahead and start from the top. We have a, uh, creative district startup funds, uh, for twelve thousand five hundred, uh, what's that about?
Mr. Mayor, this is a, a request that the creative district, uh, put into us at the beginning of the year for, I believe, thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, our thought was, let's break it out in the different marijuana requests. But this is, uh, money as it's the first year for Space to Create, for them to really get started and, and do some good things with the, with the facility. So, I'm not sure what they're planning with the money, but it is a request that they asked that we've brought to you all before and we, we, we really see the value in, in authorizing this.
Questions?
So it's specifically for Space to Create?
Absolutely, yep.
Should we ask the creative district to report to us?
Yeah.
So know what we're using it for?
Absolutely, that's a great suggestion, we will do that.
I mean, do we have a, a idea of what that money's gonna be used for, or, or potentially what's gonna be used for?
Yeah, for the most part, I believe it's used for, um, artists, um, and giving artwork to Space to Create and making sure that we're, we're really committing our mission, that we told our grant holders that we were going to do with that space. But I will ask for a report so we can see what's happening with that.
And you'll be able to, you're the determining factor whether or not that money is gonna be utilized for the specific purpose.
Absolutely.
And, you know, the best use of it, the benefit for, for the city.
Yeah.
All right, the next item there was the sixty-three thousand for the strategic plan.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did an RFP, full RFP for our strategic planning. Um, you all have authorized up to, hopefully they're not listening, a hundred thousand dollars. Bits came in and, uh, the, this vendor we selected actually was the lower price of the two, uh, bids we received. Uh, at sixty-two thousand, we feel like it's a very reasonable price for the services they're offering and putting us on a, a good trajectory.
Questions? Okay, what are we looking for within the strategic plan? What are we looking, what is gonna be the emphasis?
Well, the emphasis is basically creating a five-year roadmap for the city on how we grow and develop, but with specific goals, um, specific objectives and very tangible things that are measurable, that we will try to accomplish in that time period. Um, I think step one, though, is, uh, the consultant we're hiring is called, uh, Managing Partners, they're out of Gunnison. They used to be based in Austin, Texas, um, and they've done strategic plans for multiple communities similar to Trinidad across the country. Um, I'm super excited, uh, that we're able to award a local company, they're gonna be here in Trinidad, working with us hands-on quite a bit. But step one is to start getting individual interviews with community members, members of the council, and start getting some feedback as to what we're looking for, and then they will craft that into, uh, a guiding document on how we'll move forward. But ultimately, we should end up with a plan that highlights different buckets, I would say. So quality of life might be a bucket, infrastructure might be a bucket, and below that, specific goals that we look to accomplish on those things. Um, the big thing about it, though, is bringing our community together so that we have a holistic approach to how we move forward. There's a lot of ideas that come out here at Trinidad on what we should do, how we should do things. This will be a comprehensive plan that's a community effort that really helps us come together and, and define how we're gonna move forward and progress.
Well, you know, we do have right now the survey that's out there.
Yeah.
But we also have the area-wide planning.
Yeah.
How is, and we also have the other stuff like for the river body.
Yeah.
And how are we willing to utilize this to integrate it altogether?
That's a very good question, Mayor. So, I talked with the strategic planning consultants, they want us to send us every master plan, every planning document, every effort we're doing, Main Street redesign, area-wide planning, Parks and Rec master plan, Greenway Foundation work. And they'll incorporate, incorporate that all into this overarching strategic plan for the city.
I'd also recommend that, uh, that plan that the, we did with the city and county together.
Yeah.
Trust me, that should go off.
The Outgo Rec Plan, um, our, our housing needs assessment, everything will be encapsulated into this.
How long do you estimate that, they estimate that will take to do this strategic plan?
So, we wanna, um, start this fall and start doing those individual interviews and start doing some community engagement. Uh, we'll do some semblance of a retreat after the November election, uh, but before the end of the year so we can capture, um, perspectives from current councilors and newly-elected, uh, folks as well.
And when you get the plan done, does it come to us?
Yes, you all.
And are you able to whatever, we wanna make changes or whatever?
A hundred percent, this is our plan, uh, they're just guiding us through this, so there'll be multiple presentations to you all. Um, we'll all be involved in the process and if. Um, we'll all be involved in the process and it certainly won't be something that's dictated. It's something that we all have a say and, and can certainly make changes if we find that appropriate.
Well, I think an overall strategic plan and it sounds like all these plans of now that we've done.
Yeah.
All coming to ahead, like I talked to you about earlier, all this other stuff we have, we'll not even talk about a retreat.
Yeah.
And bringing it all into perspective, just so that we can get an understanding of where are we going with this community.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be a five-year plan. I think it's necessary that we, we do something like this so that we know, we know, we acknowledge where we've come from.
Yeah.
But we need to know where we're going. And I think together we can come up with a good answer.
And just, um, for example, when we're proposing an annual budget to you all, um, we will ask our directors, when you're putting your budget requests together, be mindful of what's in this strategic plan. How are you budgeting to accomplish the goals we've set forth? Um, really any agenda item that comes before you, no matter how minor, should have a tie-in with the strategic plan. This is why we're asking you all to make that policy decision. So it should be something that we put on a pedestal as people walk in the city hall. This is, you know, our plan for making Trinidad better and, and moving forward in the next five years.
Well, it'll, it'll include with all of the, all of our departments?
Yes.
Good.
So how does this relate to our comprehensive?
Comprehensive plan is more of a planning and growth document. The strategic plan is more, um, looking at things at a higher level. Um, so quality of life issues, major infrastructure, how we wanna redevelop, uh, what we want our motto to be, what we want our branding marketing to be, how we attract tourists. Um, but the comprehensive plan is more a land use type of plan.
Okay.
That's very important, but the strategic plan is a much higher level document.
Are they ever gonna pull one way?
They probably will, absolutely.
So within the strategic plan, like I said, like, you know, a strategic, a strategic plan, like I said, is an overarching document, but then you also have, uh, you know, what comes next? Will that be incorporated part of it?
Yes.
Like, you know, the, the planning?
Yeah.
And maybe the how-to, basically.
Yeah.
That's, because I think that's something that the next council will wanna see.
Yeah.
And the community will wanna see.
Even to the level of looking how, um, staffing should be structured here at city hall to accomplish the goals in the strategic plan. It's, it's very, very holistic.
I reckon that probably toward by the end of the year, we would have this in place.
I think it'll be early next year, but, uh, the bulk of the work, the research, um, to draft the strategic plan will happen between now and the end of the year.
Any questions?
Did you have? Um, Steve, something that you mentioned that I really appreciate.
Yeah.
At least this is the way I internalize it. I think it's gonna be super, super critical that, um, at a minimum, um, every employee at the city, um, knows that we have this. And preferably every, as many as is possible, um, citizens know that we have this because this is really our, gonna be our, uh, best effort to, to build a more robust economy for the city. Um, and, and I really like what you said, um, you know, everything was brought before here, should have been leased in some way and dovetail back into that. Because what we don't want it to do is turn into a binder on a, on a folder, on a shelf somewhere that's covered in dust. Oh, yeah, we have that, I think. So I really like that, that you mentioned it needs to be integrated into funding and the department heads, so.
I'm hoping to add a section of the communication that we provide you, um, after we get through the strategic plan for every agenda item, how is, what bucket of the strategic plan does this relate to and how does this tie in? It could just be as simple as a board or commissioner coordinate, but how does, how does this tie into our strategic plan?
Other questions? Okay. I don't know which, well, let me see. Yeah. We have, uh, D, which is fleet maintenance lifting jacks.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you personally. Today the fleet department is asking for seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to purchase a pair of rolling jacks for our newly-installed core post autumnal lift. Borrowing these jacks gave us the capability to easily and safely perform daily maintenance jobs such as brake services, suspension work and tire rotations along with various other important repairs. Additionally, this purchase gives us the capability to utilize the lift to its maximum potential to boost efficiency and turn around time. This helps us significantly because our fleet department is staff limited. An additional benefit of this purchase is the decrease in physical demands on technicians who would have to use a manual four jack and stands, thus significantly decreasing the chances of injury or accident. We know this is, we know this is a significant expenditure, but it's a valuable investment that will pay off in terms of efficiency and safety.
Questions?
That was one of my questions, what type of jacks that you're using presently?
Yeah, we have a combination of, uh, floor jacks and stands, of course, but we do have another, uh, have one four post that's equipped with, uh, jacks that I'm requesting now. And, uh, and sometimes that lift is tied up with vehicle and, but now with this new one, well, we have the capability to use it to its full potential. We just, we just need the last piece of the puzzle here.
That's a good price on that?
Uh, yeah, it was actually, uh, four, uh, I think, a little bit bad, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents with freight.
Where did you purchase it? Or did you get the bid from?
A McGee company out of Denver.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I also looked locally and they were, they were more expensive.
No question.
No, I, I just have a compliment for you. You know, since you took over, uh, you keep coming here getting stuff for equipment and that. And that's really good because nobody's ever done that before. And you keep up the trucks and the equipment because we have a lot of vehicles and we have a lot of stuff out there that needs work on. And I just wanna compliment you on doing a really good job of getting that because there's a lot of money involved in our vehicles and maintenance. You, you take it to heart to come in and give equipment to, to work and safety equipment for the man. So I'd really like to compliment you and appreciate that. You do come to us and, and get stuff instead of, you know, trying to get by. So it makes it better for our, our whole city maintenance.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate you guys and all the support you've given me since I've been here, so thank you.
Questions?
I just appreciate too the professionalism of your presentation. Very good.
Thank you.
Karen? Let me use a pretty similar setup at my work. I agree, good find out McGee had, I'm sure that was a, a good price, um, for this. And I would just mirror, uh, the sentiments that are said, appreciate your professionalism, great presentation, and, um, I fully support this.
You know, the, like, the appreciation as well from, from, I think Frank, what Frank was saying is that every time that we get a report on, um, all the items that you're having to purchase for all the different vehicles, there's quite a bit of expenditures each time that we see our report. Uh, so you're doing a lot of maintenance every day on all the different vehicles out there, so thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I've been working with Donna to try to, you know, get some of the vehicles, you know, in the fleet and trim out the old ones and stuff like that and try to get on a real, uh, fleet replacement program, if you will. So we're working on that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, item F, uh, police department. We have two items, uh, one for pepper balls and, uh, radio mics, batteries and chargers. Good afternoon.
Which one you wanna talk about first?
No, we'll just talk about the pepper balls. You know, that'll.
So that's a, that's a, it's a less lethal tool. Uh, it's an energy weapon that officers can use. Our tasers can only go up to twenty-one feet. They don't go through barricades, uh, you know, windows and such and stuff like that. So the pepper balls are designed, it's like a paintball gun, kind of. And it's filled with, uh, uh, pepper powder. Uh, similar to what we used to carry with the spray that we no longer really use anymore. So it's kind of a standoff distance that we can get that pepper onto somebody, gain that compliance in a safer manner. Um, and I wanted to outfit several of the officers with it, so it comes in a five-pack for the four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then we get the cases to store them in, um, the air containers, the CO2 containers and, uh, several boxes of the actual pepper balls.
Questions?
Popcorn balls are cheaper but less impact.
That's right.
Freeze.
I can't beat that, but.
You two were good today.
Yeah. Is it like a handheld gun?
So it, it would kinda look like, and they're colored yellow so that they cannot be mistaken and they, they would not accept any live ammunition or anything like that, but it's kind of in a rifle shape. So the officers can shoulder it. The tank would go here. I should have been prepared and brought you guys pictures and stuff, but everybody else put pictures on their stuff, I noticed. I'm like, oh, I didn't even do that. So, yeah. It, it, it mimics looking like a rifle, but it's painted or it's yellow so it can't be misconstrued for a, for a firearm.
Okay. What kind of, um, background or history does this weapon have as far as keeping the city out of litigation?
Uh, you know, we haven't, we haven't used that type of a platform yet. You know, um, we've had pepper spray in the past, we've, you know, got tasers, um, we've got hands-on, but it's just another tool for officers to be able to not have to use a lot of force, deadly force. We don't wanna do that if we don't have to or get ourselves hurt or hurt the suspects. You know, uh, we just want their compliance so we can get them safely, uh, to where they need to go for, for that moment.
I really, you know, my vote wouldn't, wouldn't be predicated on, on, uh, not have, not having that information, but I'd really like you to get that information.
I'll see what I can dig up, yeah.
Would you please?
Yeah. And, and I know they're used in quite a bit of places across the country.
Are they?
Yeah.
Even if you call a police department that's using them now and ask what their experience is?
Yes. I can look through that out.
Okay.
No.
Are, are these, um, they're not firearms, but whatever they're called, are they kept in their vehicles or do they carry them with them?
They would probably keep them like in the trunk or in the back storage. We have mostly SUVs now, so probably in the storage area of the vehicle and it's in a, I think they're in like soft cases that they can zipper up.
Okay, so even more so they wouldn't be.
Yeah, we're not gonna be walking around town with them ready to take them out.
Or, or likely to confuse it with an actual rifle.
Right, yeah, not gonna happen, no.
Thank you.
Um, I was wondering, um, how, how will you determine whether deployed, will you make available to each shift then? Is that?
So we're gonna, yeah, so we're gonna get a five-pack of them. So we have four actual patrol shifts that work now and we have like a tactical trailer that we keep geared and stuff in like that. So we probably divvy it up between the four shifts and then put one with the tactical equipment that we have.
Okay, so realistically, you think we'll have, uh, an effect around city twenty-four-hour coverage then with, with that many?
Yeah.
Cause it seems like something that's to, um, council and local authorities, it's not, uh, deployed from the officers, deployed from the vehicle per se.
Yeah, so it's not, you know, and the, the way the use of force works is, um, you don't just jump to using force on people. It's usually something that is escalated over time to where it's like, okay, we've, we've asked for options for the, um, individual that we're dealing with to either, you know, surrender or come out or whatever it is. And we, we check off the boxes before we get to any of the tools or use of force or anything we do. It just doesn't.
Yeah. It's shifted a lot of access to.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, the, being that you're using it like a firearm type, uh, how far can, will these things shoot?
You know, uh, I didn't really check to see how far they can shoot, but it's, it's, I think it's a pretty good distance. Uh, I don't know if anybody's ever played paintball or anything like that, but it's, you know.
Not the first.
Yeah, I, I mean, they, they go out pretty far. I've played paintball in the past in my younger years and I, you know, it used to, you can hit somebody block away.
Now, the, you know, the time lying for the, the balls themselves, uh, how long will they last before they have to be replaced if they never get used?
Uh, good question. I'll look that up too.
Very.
Usually a lot of this stuff that we order and get is five to ten year shelf life. Most of our equipment and, and stuff that we order, so.
So the cost that we're looking at here of, um, four thousand, uh, that includes the guns and the balls that currently?
Yeah, and, and the tanks and the cases.
So the only thing that would have to be replaced down the road would be just the balls?
More, more, more paintballs or, uh, pepper balls, yes.
Okay. And you're already, uh, extra to have on the back shelves in case you're, they're used at some point, so there's that extra in case you have to use them at some point so that when policemen can replace their football or the?
Yeah, so when, they're, they're coming in a pack of ninety, a ninety count. I would hope that we aren't using ninety. Yeah. And some of the, so it's coming with regular, the pepper, the regular balls and then it's coming with a rifle one that gets out a little bit farther.
So it's just like pepper spraying type thing?
It's, it's powdered, uh, pepper oil, basically is what it is. When you dry the peppers up and then crush it up and then powder out of it.
All right, let's go, why don't you go and give us information on the radios and batteries and chargers? Are they like some of those have been damaged or whatever?
Yeah, so our shoulder mics, they're obviously, I don't know if you've, uh, they go on the radio and then the guys have them like usually on their shoulder and stuff. They get banged up and beat up and tore and snagged. They're getting wore out, so we need to replace some of those. Um, the batteries do have a shelf life as well, um, on and off chargers. I don't know if anybody knows a lot about how batteries work, but if you charge and drain a battery over time, it just finally loses its, um, oomph. And then I needed some more chargers to distribute to the officers for at home use.
Well, one of the things that we have really taken upon ourselves to help fund the police department and fire department as best as we can.
And we appreciate it.
You know, and, uh, one thing that, uh, when I took this job seven and a half years ago, one of the things that I learned is that, uh, public safety is primary and this goes a long way for public safety.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say thank you for what, uh, looking on.
Thank you all.
Appreciate officers as well as the city of the community.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we have, uh, VW vehicles for twenty thousand, two hundred dollars. What's that about? For the works?
Okay, I guess Bob's not here. Talk about trucks.
Just tell me these, because those vehicles. Another fancy truck.
Sorry. Um, so, um, same principle, public works fleet has been, um, I hate to say it, but sort of neglected over the years. They get a lot of hand-me-downs and so their fleet is really looking bad and they're having a lot of maintenance that's required, uh, to keep their vehicles running and everything. So we're trying to, um, fix that. So we thought we would go out this year for two, to replace two of their vehicles.
And this expenditure is only for twenty thousand dollars?
Well, right.
And there's other funding, I guess, available?
We didn't have enough money in our fleet fund to purchase the three vehicles we're talking about today. So we took what we could out of the fleet and then we were supplementing with marijuana money, um, different quarters of the marijuana money. So it didn't have to come out all at one time.
I guess we'll deal with biodiesel vehicles with, with this funding and everything else that's been allocated.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Don't, okay.
Public works will get up to speed with the rest of the.
Right, I don't think they even have enough trucks for all of the guys now. I mean, they're, it's getting rough, so. Thank you, guys.
I had a, no question.
I had a question.
Sure.
Um, sorry, Steve.
Oh, good.
Thank you. Obviously, um, when you compare to the last fiscal year, we're still decreasing and I mean, that's gonna be expected to be the trend. Is that, uh, I imagine it has to be, some of them are really considering for the budget going forward. Is that, um, been being addressed pretty locally or is that something that still needs to be addressed locally?
No, um, you're spot on. We've asked all departments to propose a budget for next year that's flat compared to this year. Um, so we're starting there. I think Chief Backerak is putting some bells and whistles into his, but that's okay. We'll consider those, but, um, yeah, as the money goes down, I think the biggest thing we can do as a city is to try to offset those revenues. Otherwise through economic development, through getting people to shop locally, that type of thing and increase those dollar amounts. But it's something we're constantly monitoring. One of the big problems we have is that the reporting that we get from the state for our sales tax revenue comes in shock and upsets, I think, we're about two months in arrears. So we don't have, we can't tell you today exactly how we're doing. We can tell you today how we were two months ago. And there's a lot of variable seasons certainly impact that. So we look at things very holistically as we're formulating the budget. And then even to the extent that we get later on into the year, we'll be looking at trends and making adjustments as needed. But to your question, it is incredibly important. I think we all need to prepare that twenty twenty-four is not gonna be as funded as twenty twenty-three, certainly not twenty twenty-two.
And I think it really, it makes sense to point out that's one of the, um, big important reasons that the strategic plan needs to be taken so seriously. If as these, um, tax dollars decrease, if we can find new revenue tax dollars to replace them, it's helpful. And if you increase tourism here, I really do believe you'll help every other industry that we have. So it's just something we really need to focus on.
It's a good point. What I consistently tell people is us as a municipality, we're always gonna have more funding needs than we have money for. So, um, that's why strategic planning and decisions you make are so important. We're prioritizing that spending and it's really important that we, you know, do our diligence to our residents here to make sure we're doing the best job we can on that.
May I, uh?
Good.
Have a conversation or just, cause I'm right in cannabis street there. And I've noticed this summer has been better than the previous six months of this.
It seems like, yeah.
It is, so I did, I looked at the, um, numbers for our taxes for cannabis. And we're down twenty-five percent, but last quarter we were down thirty, so. You know, everybody predicted that we were gonna be fifty percent of what we did before. So we're really hanging, hanging in there.
Plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Right.
Here's the way I've been looking at it for the, you know, is we knew that this was coming.
Yes.
That we would get a decrease. But I think we just need to plan for the future, you know, with recreation. We talked about, you know, the anticipation of when Fish B comes online, when they're more, they'll start to take over as far as senior revenue that come into the community. So I think that's kind of the hope here and I think it will happen, but we just have to kind of hang tight and bear the weather.
The foot traffic downtown is normal.
It is. The last weekend, yes, you. Okay. All right, um, any other questions on any items that was discussed about the marijuana?
Okay. All right, let me talk to, I mean, I'd like to, Cheryl, if, you know, we allocate all this stuff for, um, different stuff. Is, is that a possibility? And I, of course, it would be the council too, I agree on this, but. Once in a while there are projects or something that the council might wanna bring up to run into this. And I'm just using an example, we one time put the Christmas decorations in there. Are we put, even the sliding that the gentleman was talking about, might be something that we can alleviate from our regular budget.
Bigger fish.
Huh? Can you hold your shadow pole there so I can finish something?
You know what, is that, you know, if you look at, if you look at the bottom of that, you know, the amount of money that was put into the, um.
Rainy day.
The rainy day fund.
Well, I mean, I understand that because that's strictly for rainy day, but I'm just kind of saying that maybe some of the council members.
Well, we can take and move some of that money around if we have to.
Yeah, and I'm just asking, you know, questions that would be if, how would we, if a council, say, oh, Aaron, me, or even Karen wanted to bring up a little project or something like, and we're not talking a big amount, just something. How would we do it? Just get to you before the quarter or go through Steve?
Can we just go through Steve? Um, typically I request requests from staff at the close of each quarter. So September thirtieth, if you know of anything, we ask for it to be in writing. You can actually fill out one of those sheets if you choose, or City Manager, or I can fill out the form, but then that's how it gets to this status.
Yeah, Mary Council, if you do have a specific funding request here with me, I'll fill out the form for you. But, and we also listen at council meetings, so hopefully you're seeing some of the things you've discussed show up in these marijuana requests. We're trying to accommodate those as well.
And then third quarter would be the best quarter. That's typically when you're in most sales or marijuana tax, is it summer?
I'm gonna tell you, do we have any right now?
I'm gonna guess about two million. It's, I'm not sure. Two million, it's earning really good interest, so.
Oh, yeah, I would just, I would just thought it'd be easier to just put, you know, straight fund and actually taking something now.
Well, in projects that are, one time, I highly recommend marijuana funds, which we're not even able to fit it in the general fund budget next year. We're not even able to fit a lot in the budget next year.
That's what I was thinking, little projects and stuff like that. Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, on to the, um, boards and commission applicant interviews. We have, um, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we have one vacancy, we have five applications. Uh, start with the first item, uh, first person is Sean Rogan.
Hi, Harold. I didn't know this was gonna be this formal, so I didn't prepare anything. I just got an email, saw it on Facebook, thought I would enjoy it. But, um, I've been in Trinidad for about, for almost eight years. My family's been here since nineteen ninety-five. I'd really like to see for the community to be involved in Parks Recs. I didn't know we had a community center until about two years ago, so, you know, I'd like to see some more things, be more involved in the community.
Questions for Mr. Rogan?
Sir, have you had any experience in your previous residence in terms of recreation?
Uh, I have, I am a member of the, uh, little club called Roller Hockey League that we set up, which is an adults roller hockey league over here at Skatland. Scheduled that we're crunching our season two. Obviously, we first spend one to join the players.
Yeah. Yeah, over sixty, it's by Lincoln.
You should see a skate, you're gonna be good.
White, white parks and red, Sean?
Um, it was really just, you know, like I said, it's something that I'd like to be involved in and be more active in my life. You know, be part of the community for that.
Yeah, that's my question. So, thank you for putting it forward.
Yeah.
Um, do you have any, um, vision that you, um, really have a lot of passion for and you'd like to see implemented?
I think what I would really like to see is, and this is gonna sound very formal, but we have, we do focus very heavily on kids, which is good, which is very good, and I don't want to take that away, but we don't have like adult leagues for adults to do anything here. We don't have like adult three-on-three, adult kickball, adult softball, like things like that that we can get, you know, people that are not, you know, hey, we're going to the bar and we're gonna play darts, we're gonna play this, you know, something that's outside and people are getting people active. So kind of focusing more on adult things.
Yeah, you know, we offer, you know, it's gotten better after, you know, this pandemic that we had and getting back up to snuff with some of the youth activities. But I think you're spot on, just trying to offer something for adults as well. And I think we just need somebody with a little vision, with a creative mind as to what would be good for the community?
Yes.
How can we build this? Cause the big question is, that people have is, what is there to do in Trinidad?
Exactly.
So I think we need someone to look at it more visionary, to see what else can be done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Tom Schultz, Mr. Schultz, what do you have?
Resting. Well, you probably know I'm a one-hit pony. I play golf, I really don't, haven't played softball in years or, you know, disc golf or anything like that. But I am here, you know, to keep the golf course moving along, keep, I'm hoping we're moving along. And, uh, I gave it to Miami Lake yesterday or Saturday and that place is fantastic. That's something we probably. But, uh, I've raised two kids, I've been on golf board in Trinidad and that's about my experience.
Any questions?
Tom, what else would you like to have, to see implemented or initiated if you were on the board?
On the city, um, I'm not much of a trainer or anything, you know, but like he says, there's plenty of adult areas to work out. You know, I used to play softball, city league basketball, I don't know if he's still doing it.
I don't think so.
We're too old. But, uh, yeah, it's, I agree, growth, you have to grow. You have to get people off the interstate. Like they were talking about a life festival, you put a golf course in, some more golf course up there where people just, you can't miss it. It'd be the biggest billboard you could ever do. I'm gonna talk.
You know, it's not the joy of my life that I have to talk to you, but we have to be.
That's right.
No, I, you mentioned in here that you live in Arizona for several months during the winter. Do you have the, um, internet and computer capabilities you could zoom in on your? All right, Tom.
Yeah, that was my only question and then, yeah. Thanks for putting it, I mean, that's a good one, we need more people.
Well, that would be a world, I mean.
That would come to my house every day. Well, the golf course, but no, that's great. I'm glad you put me in for it. Like I say, that would be the only question I had was if you can zoom in on the board meetings and stuff.
How could Parks and Recs help the utilization of the golf course? What are your thoughts about that?
Well, I've talked to Steve a little bit and we kind of, I, you know, my idea is to buy land. Did not make any more land and there's some good parcels over there. I don't know if you could even get some private funding to help out, but the other nine holes is the ticket. With the driving range, you know, I, there is problems. I mean, you got a clubhouse that you're trying to fix up. You'd have a station in one end of the property, which isn't ideal. But I say with the visibility for that, for that area, I don't know. But you could, you could work it. I know how much land is possible. If there's areas for, you know, pickup ball courts or some kind of, you know, other, other than just the golf course. There's no golf team here anymore. It's just a little bit sad.
Is there a way we can reach to kids to get them more involved in it?
I have a layered friend and I'm gonna ask him if he could sponsor golf scholarships, maybe pay her up and say, hey, kid, go play golf. We'll see.
I appreciate you finding that, questions.
Okay, you know, Tom, you know, I know that you go south, you know, for the winter.
Hmm.
And, uh, you probably play golf down in them areas.
Sure.
Through your experiences, what kind of enhancements, like you mentioned, other nine holes? What other things just besides the nine holes could be done to add to the recreational opportunities for the community?
Oh, in the community?
Yeah, well, for the community, well, to bring in additional tournaments, what, what are your thoughts?
You step it up in the world. I mean, it's like, that's a sign of civilization to me. You know, I've heard people that came here, they looked at the property and they said, well, what's a golf course like? So that's a nine holder and it's like kind of like, oh, well, pass. There's people that, you know, they're dedicated golfers and they bring family and, I don't know. It's, it's, I think it's a, you can't lose situation. As long as, as long as you can get it built by a good architect and keep the little nine hole course going, you know, it needs, it needs tune-ups. You know, it needs equipment, but eighteen holes needs equipment too.
Is there room from what you've seen for an additional?
You guys, you look at it pretty good.
Yeah.
Is there additional?
It's a lot of hills and valleys, pardon.
Is there additional room for another nine holes out there?
Hell, yeah. Well, I heard that there was an architect up here fifteen, twenty years ago. He says, I can get you a driving range and another nine holes. I don't know how far he looked or what. I had talked to Leonis one day and they said, they didn't say no. You know, like, I asked him what the lemonade stand was. I don't know if you remember the lemonade stand?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Schultz? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Okay, we have Jude Sears?
He's down here.
John Norris?
So, uh, yeah, I think it's great that we have this much interest in, in the position on the, on board. I'm a disc golfer, um, let's see what else, a disc golfer, I've been involved in trails, building trails. Um, I'm backing up from that because I, uh, a little old for the shovel work.
Get a smaller shovel.
Yeah, get a smaller shovel. So, um, yeah, I'm, um, I've been to several of the meetings already and, uh, the, my biggest thing, I mean, if there's other people that want the position, I'm already on planning and zoning, so, I mean, that's great. My, my big thing is, um, the biggest thing that I see from, from all the, uh, recreational facilities we have around here is that, um, we don't have adequate, um, uh, raven-proof trash containers out of the ball fields, which, you know, everybody goes and they bring their meals and, and people aren't slobs, but all that food product gets, just gets pulled right back out of the dumpster. And so it's, um, it's the same with Central Park, it's the same, um, well, we're just now a warm loop. We're doing great things out there, fantastic, the new parking, the bear, the bear box. I mean, those are the kinds of things that we need to, to keep the community looking good, so. And do you have any other questions for me?
Thanks for Mr. Norris.
Uh, thank you for being part of the other boards that you're serving right now.
Yeah.
Thank you for mentioning the elevator and appreciate you being here today. Anything else you might want to implement in terms of?
No, I think I, I agree with the, uh, Parks and Rec is typically underfunded in a city. And it's incredibly important for the, for the satisfaction of those people moving to the community. And so, um, um, it's often overlooked on budgets and things and so, um, it's incredibly important and it just really helps the quality of life, so continue to try to steer whatever you can toward the Recs Department and.
So you can handle being on three boards if you're?
Uh, I'm, I'm good with doing, I mean, um, I mean, I would take the additional spot. I've, I have, um, I've been working, I know somebody, other members are on board, um, and I've been working with them. And, um, it seems like pretty much the golf course is pretty well represented. Intermural sports would be great because we're trying to get the thirteen to eighteen group more involved and dovetail them into adult is probably the best, um, option we're gonna get, so I think that's my vote. But, um, anyway, thank you.
Any other questions?
What did you do with the school district? What was your job?
Um, I was, um, I was in the classroom for, um, for fifteen years and then in admin for, for town, um, in the IT department.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, Simon Nichols, I guess, is not here, so, okay. Let's go on to then the grants update and who are we gonna do there? I talked to Steve about this. It's unfortunate that, uh.
Do you have additional boards to interview?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Historic. Well, we do have.
Historic residence.
Urban forestry.
Urban forestry, we got.
I think they're both, they're both me.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Chris Bryant and I moved to Trinidad about six years ago from Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'm a software developer, um, but I'm a really good at things. My first degree is actually in horticulture. I have an associate's in applied science and horticulture for, uh, there's your greenhouse management. But I'm also really interested in trees, so I would definitely, you know, enjoy advocating for bore trees and preservation trees. As, you know, the main goal of that, I'm not sure exactly what that board does, but that's my outlook on it. Anything else regarding the forestry?
Questions?
Questions?
Seems like you're very well qualified and your enthusiasm kind of speaks volumes, so.
Yeah, I'm like interested in something I'm really very interested in, so.
I'm a liaison for the urban forestry board and I, I think that would be great for you. But you're asking for maybe a position with historic preservation as well? Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Do you have a, uh, it seems like it'd be a great, yeah.
Well, another side, on the historical basis side, um, I was really kind of interested in the history of the town and area in general, but specifically. but specifically in the railroading and mining history. And I think there's just a ton of history that's not, that could be better captured and better conveyed. I think the history is one of the major assets the town has and it also plays into a lot of the tourism and, you know, other sorts of things. So if we can kind of preserve, promote, um, you know, what really exists and, uh, kind of have more ways of communicating some of the stories and some of the history of the city, I think that would really add to, you know, the, uh, the character of the city and make it more attractive in general. I have a lot, I, I'm actually trying to start a model railroading club in Trinidad. And my long-term goal is also to start a railroad museum here. So I've been doing a ton of research into the history of railroad here. There are a lot of books about different railroads I've gone through here. I've visited tons of museums around here in the Mexican states. So it's kind of a personal project of mine, whether or not I do anything with the city directly, if I actually would, one way or another down the line. So I felt like this is a good sort of entry point into that. I, I work from home. I have a remote job, I'm pretty flexible in terms of my time. So in terms of serving on both boards, I guess it would depend on what the exact sort of demands are. I think I'm, I think I know that on the application, I could probably do at least a couple hours a month. I don't know if that would help or if it would be more helpful to do four hours on one than the other, I'd probably take the historical preservation board.
Other questions?
No.
You know, you mentioned, you know, history of the railroad and all that, but you might look into, nobody's really kind of done it, but there's a really big history of streetcars and...
Yeah, no, actually, I wish I had gone with me. I have a lot of the original tokens from, uh, the early nineteen hundreds from the Trinidad railway. And that is one of the, that's definitely one of, I have these ideas about, uh, you know, how this, you know, to play out. I have like kind of a way of an idea of, you know, thinking about the steam era. There's the electric side with the trolleys that ran out to, to, uh, to jam. Yep, so, um, yeah, then you go to the diesel era and there's, so I think there'd be a lot of different ways to convey that history and the streetcar companies, definitely.
Yeah, I think that would really be something to look into, turn that to have, because we have a real big history of trains and streetcars and the mining and that, so that would really be interesting.
I've joined the, uh, the state Colorado history board, the organization. I've, uh, they were doing some classes, I took one class. They did online about, uh, curation and how you sort of develop a curation policy and how you, uh, apply that to what people want to donate and the sort of legalities and morality and ethics of all. So I've also talked to the coal mining museum, um, I've talked to a few other places around town about what I'm trying to do and I really, uh, you know, uh, kind of laying the groundwork for these things, but I kind of see an overlap definitely with the model training club also because there's a lot of ways to model historical aspects of the town that could become, you know, real good draws for people. People love to see trains, people love to see models and so if there's something that reflected, you know, the local, uh, community, then I think that would be really, really cool.
I, I love your enthusiasm for the history of this place and I served on the Historical Preservation Commission before as a city councilor and you're, you add a lot. But I want to ask you about your interest in the trees in this town. Is there anything that you think that we could do to, um, have better trees for this area? I know we have a lot of Chinese alms that are, that just kind of take over. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I've done a lot more research in the railroads than I have the trees. But, uh, but I have to, and my education is from Tulsa and so we, you know, learned about trees around there. But I didn't take, you know, general horticulture, digital pesticides, stuff like that. So, um, I kind of have to become more familiar with some of the issues with trees around here. So I don't have any specific targets on that yet, but maybe more trees, more trees is always good, so.
All right, thank you.
I have just two comments that are sort of tangential. Um, I think the, both boards are obviously super important. I mean, I've said this last time we did the, um, interviewing for the tree board. You know, we have so many of our nice trees, especially the evergreens around town are just showing a lot of signs of distress. So it would be really nice if we could do something for them. In fact, a lot of them have died, the ones on Park Street, they're right by the college parking lot. Those have been trees there, I mean, for a long, long time and they're all dead. And then you see a lot of the evergreens have such distress, so it'd be nice if we could do something. And then, um, Mr. Bryant, I really appreciate your, um, advocacy for history in Trinidad and it's something that's super, um, important. And I think, you know, you alluded to, um, we really need to make that part of our strategic plan, not to keep talking about that, but, uh, every, every, um, interest that we can develop into the strategic plan is another group of people that can draw to Trinidad to potentially bolster, you know, um, small business here and help everything. So, uh, I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Well, I think also the fact that we have a train station here, we have an anthrax here. Train lovers love to ride trains. They love to go places that have train, uh, you know, attractions, um, so if we had more of those, it would be...
Give us a little more information, your background on horticulture. What's your, as you said?
My horticulture background?
Yeah.
Um, I, like I said, studied horticulture at the University, Tulsa Community College and, uh, my main focus was on greenhouse and nursery management. Uh, I worked for a small market garden farm that grew heirloom tomatoes and peppers and night plants and, and things like that. Um, I also did an internship there and I had ideas about a business plan for starting a, uh, flower farm in Tulsa. That's kind of my idea, a flower farm or a green, like a, uh, salad, like a lettuce and leafy greens sort of company because there's constant demand for that sort of thing. So I had some different ideas. Um, what I ended up doing was managing a liquor store for seven years. So kind of got derailed, uh, but that was fun and, um, I ended up becoming a home brewer and, and becoming good at that. I ended up going back to school for, for computer science. And then kind of between there, I worked at the home brewing store in Tulsa for a while, between the liquor store and going back into the computer side or going into software development.
Well, what's interesting is that, you know, your interest in what you've done, uh, with like food to table type stuff is what your background has been so far. And there's a, a lady, I forget what her name is, that does the community gardens and...
Yeah, what is the game called? That's too big of a thing.
Snyder's thing? Jimmy, Jimmy Snyder. And again, together with her and kind of planning some...
I was thinking that, wanted to get involved with that.
You know, I do like your thoughts, you know, going into the next, since you're sitting there. You're standing there, you know, historic preservation, uh, your ideas on railroad and, you know, cars that used to have, that used to run around all over the place. Too bad that we can't bring a few of those back because that would be, it would be kind of cool, but, but it's not real. But I think that there's, I think we need to look at the, as we continue to look at the history of our community, that is really going to help how this community moves forward, moves forward, so. Need somebody with a real good interest in, in our, our past history as well, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just point out that he got derailed in his... Liquor store and the whole, you know, good observation. That was a roundabout kind of question.
Yes. Hey, yes.
We have Hex, the word Roger? That's for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes.
Yes, I'm also on the Parks and Culture Commission as well. And, uh, yes, I would like to be on the Historic Preservation Committee. Uh, would you like to know about me?
I guess the biggest thing is what can you offer?
Um, I'm not exactly sure how to answer that. I offer my time and my energy and my love of historic preservation. I have, uh, my family is very big on genealogy and historic preservation. Recently went to our family reunion in Montana to the old homes that's there. So it's all been very important to me and I've been here about two and a half years. And I have a house in the historic district that was built in eighteen eighty-eight with a cottage next door that was built in nineteen oh-four. And, uh, you know, I want to make sure that buildings like that survive. Like, uh, I see the Opera House and I was just doing the show, sounding music. And at seven o'clock, if you're upstairs, um, at the corner of the Opera House, that's when the raccoons come out. Almost like clockwork and, uh, they have a lovely home in there. There's a lot of buildings around town that I really would love to see. And if I had the money, I would just buy them all and redo them, but I can't do that. And I don't have any, you know, any grand plans for, for railroads, but I think it's, that's a great idea. Any museums, because that's what we would do, we'd stop and go to museums along the road. And anything that would add to tourism here and, and revenue and just people knowing about this city. Because I keep finding out more and more and more. I walk around with my dog and just look at everything that's been saved. And I think you guys have done a great job of keeping, especially Main Street, really authentic. And I like that about this city is that your love of the preservation and the history.
Questions? That's where I've seen you being street life.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here. Everybody wants to leave. I don't blame you. You called me back from the other.
I do, I noticed that you worked, um, in San Diego, I think, for, um, the Historic Theater Preservation. Have you gotten involved at all with the Fox Theater?
Well, not a lot. I mean, I'm on their mailing list and I'm keeping track of what's going on there. I mean, I don't know, at this point, you know, I would love to be involved in that, especially, uh, just because of the history of the theater. And when I'm in the lottery, I'm paying for it. Yeah, there were, uh, we, we, San Diego saved several of their older theaters, which is lovely. And I was able to work in most of those, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate your enthusiasm and applying for the boards. Thank you.
All right, I have my questions. Thank you very much.
All right. You're a good actor.
Thank you.
Yeah, you were heard in show.
Yes.
Yeah, you should be very good. Ashley Ryan.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for seeing me today. Appreciate that. Uh, just a quick reminder, my name's Ashley Ryan. I'm the manager of Native Roots. I'm also, I was luckily enough appointed to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board last May. Thank you for that. Um, just a little bragging, um, in the course of my duties there, I have received a scholarship for the Governor's Tourism Conference. I'll be part of that leadership journey in September. Looking forward to that. I'm also working to complete the craft training on the Colorado Tourism Office website. They have mining labs there. I take my role seriously and I want to do the best that I possibly can. Um, why I am applying for the Historic Preservation Commission? Um, so LTAB is my work. Historic preservation is my passion. Um, I really love history. I'm interested in learning more about the history of the beautiful architecture that we have here. I am excited about the prospect of learning more about preservation work. Um, I recently learned about Miss Dana Crawford and the work that she has done in the past and what she's trying to do here. I'm excited about that. I'd love to, uh, be able to maybe learn some things from her, if I'm lucky enough. Um, if there's training available, I'm looking to do it. I'm just excited about being more involved in everything. Looking forward to it.
Questions?
Thank you, Ashley, for wanting to be part of the Historic Preservation Commission. Appreciate it.
Do you have time to work on two boards?
Yeah, you know what? It doesn't take that much time. I have, I do nothing. I work and I go home. So this has actually got me out of the house and talking to people and, you know, I, I'm pretty sure I have time. I've been going to the meetings.
To the historic preservation?
Yes, yes. Last, the last one I went to, the one before that I tried to attend online, but there was an error with the, the link. And then the one before that, I think they don't think they had it because they haven't enough people. But I've been attending as possible. Um, and they're going to change the time, so that may be even easier to be well after work.
There's no conflict between the Lodging Tax Advisory Board and as far as times of...
They're on different days.
Okay.
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you for putting me.
From what you've observed at the Historic Preservation meetings, what do you think, how do you think you could be useful to that board?
Well, I mean, a lot of paperwork, I'm really good at that. You know, um, I, like I said, I've been attending. They haven't been, I think there was one time when someone was there to actually present about the work they were doing and I believe it was the building that's attached to the travel shop. Um, they want to do something in the back of it. Um, you know, it's maybe not the most exciting thing in the world, but, you know, if it can give me some insight as to what we actually have as far as historical assets here, I think, like these guys have already said, it would tie in greatly to what I do with LTAB, um, you know, to have a knowledge of additional assets that we can use in our favor. Thank you.
I have no questions, but I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
You know, Ashley, uh, historic preservation is something that we are noted for, you know, not only in Trinidad, but across the state. A lot of people come to Trinidad, I think, just and, as you drive around town, you see tourists and they are looking at old buildings. So we need people that have that enthusiasm, that really want to keep our buildings intact, to be the best that they can be. And being that, you know, this particular commission, it's a good group of people that have, I think, a big responsibility. Being able to work together, of course, being a good team player is essential. And I think that's what's, uh, you know, to build, uh, just to be able to work together to make the best out of what we need in this community to continue to restore these old buildings and to keep them intact. So, uh, thank you for applying.
Thank you, Ashley.
Any questions?
I guess that's all, right? We didn't have anything on urban renewal or, uh, what's the... So go on to the grants update. And, uh, there's something just mentioned to you that always the newspaper hadn't left so abruptly. But I talked to Steve about this and I thought it would be a good, a good time to be able to inform the public as to how, how grants work, the, for the application process, all the way down to how it's, they're, my, and so. Just really, why don't you kind of fill us in all the voices of mine?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's why we're bringing this side of board to you all today. There's been some comments made recently about there's all this money available, hundreds of millions of dollars that we should be going for, and that's not untrue. Uh, but we take a very strategic approach to our grant application process. And I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we factor in when we're looking at certain grants for the city. Obviously, free money is great, but I don't know that there is such a thing as free money. So the first thing that we want to be mindful of is matching funds. So just for example, a four million dollar grant request, um, and in fact, we're working on one for Holy Trinity right now uh, through DOLA to support the, uh, the Affordable Housing Initiative that's being proposed there, requires an eight hundred thousand dollar match, a twenty percent match. So, um, sometimes it can be in kind, but sometimes it's straight cash. So that's the first thing we look at. Do we have the money to put in the matching funds to demonstrate that we can, you know, meet the requirements of the grant? The second thing that I think is important is the administrative burden. We have a very limited staff here. If I tell Jenny Jackson that we're applying for one more C dot grant, she'll probably quit and slash her tires on her way out the door. So when we look at grants, we also want to know what's the paperwork requirement? What's the reporting requirement? Um, how much staff time are we going to have to spend in administering those grants? And I'll give you an example, housing and urban development funds, head funding, CDG, those things, uh, most cities that get those types of funding have at least a part-time employee specifically for administering those grants. The, the requirements are, are intense and they're very, very stringent. So it's very important that we're mindful of the burden we're putting on our staff. So it's very important that we're mindful of the burden we're putting on our staff. The third thing I think that we look at is partnerships. So do we have the capacity to partner with maybe the Purgatory Watershed folks? Or maybe our friends at the county or our friends at the college? Those are things where if we don't have the capacity, can we partner with some of these other entities or nonprofits, even the private sector, to help administer these grants? And if we can't find somebody who can help us administer them and work through the grant, we may not have the resources ourselves to do it. But we try to seek those out, we try to look, where in the community can we find people who can come in and help us with, with those efforts? And then I think one of the most important things that often gets forgotten is maintenance. If we build a new project, we have to maintain it. And one thing I specifically want to highlight on that, GOCO funding. They are incredibly sensitive to if we partner with you and give you grant funding for a project, are you going to be able to maintain that project going forward? And I'm not trying to badmouth, but I'll give you an example. In Walsenburg, their water park, that was a GOCO funded project, they had an agreement with GOCO, Walsenburg did, to keep it operational until twenty thirty-three, I believe, or yeah, twenty thirty-three. And they let it go into disrepair to the point that it needs two million dollars to be reopened. They're not going to be able to do that. So right now, Walsenburg's not eligible for any GOCO funding because they're not able to maintain that facility that was partially funded. So that's something that's crucial for us, I never want to see Trinidad get into that situation where we built something, we can't maintain it. So we have to be mindful of the staffing and what we have to maintain those projects. And then the last thing that I think is really important when we're factoring in what we're applying for is timing. Some grants have maybe a year deadline to get the project done. And so that is incredibly important, in fact, we found that on Santa Fe Trail. Our bike pedestrian way, walkway that we're, we're planning there, we had some serious conversations with CDOT as to are we going to be able to get this project done in time before the grant funding runs out? And the last thing we want to do is be left with egg on our face because we weren't, we got awarded a grant and we weren't able to, to get it done because of timing, for whatever reason. That could be supply chain issues, that could be our readiness to work on that project and juxtapose it with all the other projects that we have going on. Right now, our Public Works Department, for example, is spending a tremendous amount of time administering First Street as a project. So we, we do have limited capacity and we want to make sure we can get it done within the grant timeline. So I just wanted to highlight those things really for you all and the public. So when we're looking at grants, it's a holistic approach that we take in deciding what to go for. Right now, honestly, our major needs are in the water department. All of our water tanks need to be rehabilitated. And in fact, Talitha's here to talk to you a little bit about some opportunities and Marcus here as well, to talk to you about that project and how we might phase it. So I thought this would be a really good opportunity to really highlight to you what our most urgent needs are in terms of grant funding. And I, I love the enthusiasm about some of the more tourist-oriented grants and the, and the artistic ones. But right now, we don't have a parking rent department. So everybody on city staff who has to administer those is, is doing double duty. But the nuts and bolts thing, the, the mission that we're here to provide quality services to our residents, those are the things that we can't ignore. So our roads, our water infrastructure, our wastewater infrastructure, our buildings. We've, we've neglected heating and cooling over the years because it's just not something that people think about for our municipal facilities and that's something we're trying to correct at this point. So I, I love the flashy stuff, I love the big gold initiatives, I love lighting displays. But when we're talking about serving our residents, I think we have a duty to them to make sure that we're providing basic core services that, that they rely on for us to provide. So any questions for me on those things? And if not, we'll have Talitha and Mark come up and talk to you a little bit more about water specific grants and some of our needs there.
Any questions?
Does it have to be just in general about grants?
Yes. Well, in general, just grants.
I just wanted, I just noticed on Second Street that Arroyo, was that our grant money that did that?
I'm not sure, I apologize, I don't have any answer to that.
Can you?
I'm thinking about that question for a moment.
They're putting all kinds of cement.
Yeah.
I just, just a question.
No, it's a good question, we'll find out the origins of that project and get some information to you all.
Sure, neither one thinks it's our grant, it's somebody else doing it.
Yeah. So Talitha, Mark, if you don't mind joining me, we can talk a little bit more about some of the things that we're doing. Just so you all know, Talitha is on contract with us and she's doing a tremendous job helping us with our grant applications and keeping an eye out for funding opportunities, so.
Just get some general, other general questions.
But any other general questions to you all?
No, the only thing I would like to bring up is you made a good point and I think that's a real important thing is maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, we overlook that a lot, so we really need to work on that.
We do, yeah, it's the twenty year anniversary for the Sake Guard, for example, and we've kind of neglected it. So we're trying to find ways that we can improve that and get that back up to life. So we don't want to, we just don't want to be in those positions where we have an asset that we can't maintain.
I really appreciate, or quite frankly, I appreciate your sharing that information because when people come in front of us and say, you know, we didn't take the grant, it kind of, it leaves us without an explanation. But I'm really grateful that we have you at the helm and that you understand what's required for each one of those things and that we're doing things in a way that's going to actually succeed, other than just throwing money.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to say I really do appreciate that really holistic look at the grant process. I, I don't know what our options would be, but I think, I really do think we owe that to our constituents to get that out in a very public way. If there's some way that could be repeated at a, at an actual council meeting, I think that would be important.
Well, do that again next week, do this again next week.
Do that and we can target that as an item for a future newsletter that Mises is working on as well.
You know, you know, that you did mention something that was super important and around Bowie, but we need to look at the benefit. First of all, how it's going to benefit the community. And like I said, you're going to talk about the water tanks and that's a huge benefit that we're going to have to face, you know, down, pretty down quickly. The other comments I wanted to mention, and like I said, it was the newspaper, it was your thing too, Tom. But the, the two items that we got blasted for was that blueprint. And the thing about that is that that is moving forward.
Oh yeah, hundred percent.
And then the trailer thing, we got nailed on that one. Remember that some of these grants are not a one and done. Sometimes there, you can, you know, bypass it one time before it also, it's available at another round. So we gotta remember that, that it's not always the first go around. Sometimes there's a second go around that we can apply for some of these grants. Cause we need to be able to administer those grants, we need the capacity of our staff to be able to handle it. And we also need the matching funds, again, when we look at the benefit and all the other things that you mentioned.
Mayor, you're absolutely right and one thing I'll say on that is, you know, typically, we want to identify the need and then match a funding source to that need instead of identifying the funding source and then trying to reverse engineer that into a project. And this is where strategic planning, I think, will really help us.
And I talked to Mr. Uger here just the other day about the upcoming budget, about this and is to establish maybe pots of money for the different grants available out there for whether it's the water department, the food department. And put that in the budget so at least we know what money is available. What are the four different grants that may be coming? But also have a contingency amount in there so that if something comes up that you've already expended, that you'll have some additional funding available for a grant that may come down the road, which Talitha will find for us, so.
Absolutely.
I'll turn it over to you guys.
Well, and oftentimes, Mayor, just to round that out, it will apply to multiple funding sources for the same project. And I think that's a good segue to what these folks will talk to you about a little bit on the water side.
See you again, Talitha.
Yeah.
Nice to be here. The grant I wanted to talk about specifically with council because it is my understanding that we need council approval to apply for this grant through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the State Revolving Fund. It's actually a loan program, but pre-COVID, it was a fifty percent grant. If you applied for this loan, then you got fifty percent forgiveness. After COVID, that has changed, disadvantaged, disadvantaged communities are eligible for sixty to eighty percent forgiveness. We qualify as a disadvantaged community. So this is what we were hoping to apply for, with council approval, for the lead and copper.
For the lead and copper.
We have to be, by October of next year, we have to have a survey in place. And if all the municipal offices are at a copper. We've already started internally to help save us some money. We have some workers within the city now that are going out with tarponino metering, those are routes to start an inventory where they got lead or copper service lines coming in the house. You know, all new sub developments, we already know how copper, we can already remove those out. But if you're pre-eighties, when they're using a galvanized water service lines, they have a lot of leaded goosenecks and those are the ones we're trying to identify. So the more we can identify, the more money it'll save us as we move forward with the survey.
When you say gooseneck, what is that component, is that the metered loop?
No, most of the leaded goosenecks cast iron water mains, okay? If they had a copper service line, we directly tapped the mains with the corporate stock and they came right off of that with a copper line. Or galvanized lines, they tapped the water main, cast iron water main. And they had an actual piece of leaded service line, which is called goose neck, shaped like a goose. And then they connected to galvanized, those are the ones we see primarily the most lead in as, as service lines that are composed of galvanized. So that's what we're trying to identify right now, if we can identify all those, there's other ways to test, they can do like water samples, test for how many lead is in all service lines. If it meets, if it falls under certain criteria, they'll have to be removed. Denver Water Board, they have money in the budget, they're just doing water line replacement program right out of the bag. We don't have the funds to do that. So we have to do a survey, we have to identify what we have in our system and see how the EPA keeps going to require it from that point moving forward. We may have to start replacing a bunch of our infrastructure. But we have talked with company one twenty water, it gives a proposal of seventeen thousand four hundred and some odd dollars to start doing a survey for us and the more information we give them, it helps bring the costs down and that's just to get started. But we've also talked with, yes, and there's some free assistance, they're, they're trying to get contractors aboard to see if they're going to be part of that. If they are, then we can report with them or find a contract as part of the program to help save us some money. It may not cost us anything to do the survey with the free assistance, we've already applied for free assistance with the EPA, we haven't heard that from them yet. But there's, there's grant money out there for infrastructure and that's what we're going to target, but we're just in a hole right now waiting to see what contractors are being able to use for that money. So we're not alone in this, but we're working forward, moving forward with this. The other one, the hit blue program that we got awarded for those four shovel projects, you spoke a little bit about funding. Well, we didn't know it was going to take this long, back in December, we were awarded the grants. We still are, we're, we're in progress, we still have not been awarded the money.
Not application was April, but last year.
Yeah, we still have not been awarded the funds, there's a lot of red tape with these federal grabs, it's the first that we've applied for, so. What, what I mean by that is that when we first went out, this is how much money we can get these four shovels, but all the, a year's gone by now, over a year, well, costs have gone up. So engineering costs now come in above and beyond where we projected they have to be. So that's one thing we got to be careful of because we, how much over now? It's, it started out at one point three, one point four, now we're at five zero over one point five. Our match was supposed to be twenty, twenty eight thousand, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, now we're up around five hundred thousand dollars. Now it's an eighty twenty, I just put the cost of the engine in the box. It's taken so long to get, to get the funds available.
Who's controlling that money? The DOLA or who's it?
No, this is the.
EPA, but it comes through the same fund that we're talking about right now, that State Revolving Fund.
Have we required to see what's the holdup on the funding?
It's just a process, right now, we're in the environmental review process. It's not a holdup necessarily, it's just a long process.
It's just a long process.
That's what's activating with these players come out is that they don't understand that all the red tape that they put in place to get that money. All it does is escalate the costs and that's not, and that then it falls back on us to fund that difference.
So when this showed up on the agenda, I was like, maybe we can start talking about this one because it is so important. And so if we can get this conversation started, because it is a loan with eighty percent forgiveness and a very low interest rate. So we'd like to apply for that for the copper and then we'd like to apply for the DOLA Energy Impact Grants for.
What do we have to meet for that forgiveness? What do we have to do to get that forgiveness?
All community, right?
Disadvantaged community, yeah, so I mean, if you want to know the specifics that qualify as.
Most based on population, right?
Yeah, so community less than ten thousand people. And then median household income needs to be less than sixty four thousand, we're at forty thousand. Median home value needs to be less than three hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred, our median home value is a hundred and fifty eight thousand seven hundred. The county two-year unemployment rate needs to be greater than five point six percent. There needs to be lost in jobs over ten years and our county unemployment is five point one percent. So we are a disadvantaged community.
Great news.
And so that would mean that we would be eligible for sixty to eighty percent principal forgiveness and the interest rates of one and a quarter to two and a quarter percent by being a disadvantaged community. It's another program within the State Revolving Fund. And then the water tank, we also applied for congressionally directed spending, but we're not aware for that project, that was this April. And so we would like to apply for DOLA Energy Impact Funds for each tank.
So we got rejected on that front for the tanks?
It made the first stage, but the second stage fell through.
Yeah, and so also the master plan from Seattle.
Yeah, the water tank, we have, yeah, we won't do it all at once, it didn't make it anymore. From what we've heard, the, 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 the grant, it was just blown through the same money from the DOLA, that's correct?
From that State Revolving Fund, so.
From the State Revolving.
Yeah, when they, the bipartisan infrastructure law, the, in all of the great things that they were creating, there weren't necessarily ways to go down, they just sort of made the pockets that existed bigger for a lot of them. So, and so for congressionally directed spending, they already have the infrastructure in place to make sure that the projects fit all of the requirements and they have all of the capacity. So they just used that fund to fund our water tank, or our water line projects.
That was interesting because I, I thought that Antonio Werta, I actually have the email from him when we, and I thought it was after the April funding that we.
For the water tank grant?
Yeah.
It, it did, it got moved to the next step, you're correct. But we just, we surrendered now, it didn't go, so we fell. So now, what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to break those down in phases. Try to, because like, was it the DOLA grant, they had like four million dollar gap?
Yeah, with that energy impact.
So we're going to have to try to get funding for doing one at a time instead of all at one time.
And Major, what is that one, main tank up on the hill, right? That's your first tank, I think you talked about having to do that first?
Yeah, yeah, so, sort of, so now we're going to have to do them in phases, yeah.
Okay, you're talking about a loan, what kind of a loan are we looking at?
The DOLA grants are basically loans, correct?
I'm sorry, third question.
What kind of dollar, what kind of dollar mark are we going to have to apply for, for a loan?
The project cost is what we apply for?
Do you estimate each tank to be about a million dollars?
The DOLA, yeah.
And how many tanks?
The Energy Impact Grants, yes.
We have one, two, three, four, five. But one really tank, I think we can do that, around two hundred and fifty thousand. Then we have the Aldo tanks, south side tank, north side tank, those are all three one hundred gallon tanks. Then we have the Ganson tank, which we're still trying to get the land swap with the correlation errors in order to put another tank there outside, so that one probably will be the last one, because we have three existing there.
So we have roughly five tanks, four and a half million dollars approximately, is it?
Plus the infrastructure work, we have to install booster pumps in order to continue to get water pumps while we drain them. We were estimated around sixty six thousand dollars to do the whole three project.
So we're going to go for a loan for the entire amount?
The loan would be for copper and lead work, if I.
Two separate ones, we got the lead and copper rule envision, that's something totally separate.
That the EPA is requiring by October of twenty twenty four.
Yes, have a deadline, have a survey done.
So lead pipes is one project.
So Mayor, if I could just kind of paraphrase, so what we're looking at doing is, like they're saying.